Good evening. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting, March 13th, 2025. May I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. Let everybody rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Additions and deletions to the agenda.
Staff has one proposed change to the agenda this evening, which would be switching the orders of items C and D. So taking item C, the annexation request for Ballb Avenue, as the last item on the agenda.
That sounds great. Access to number three presentations. First one, presentation from Diantis community. Do we have anybody here for that?
I believe the presentation this evening is from Red Cross?
Yeah, we have one first from Diantis and then from the Red Cross. We'll move on to the Red Cross. This March, we celebrate Red Cross Month, a time to honor selfless contributions and individuals and organizations who work tirelessly to prevent and alleviate human suffering. Central Coast Chapter of the American Red Cross continues to serve our community with volunteers and donations. One hundred and seventy Red Cross volunteers in Santa Cruz make a meaningful difference, helping forty-seven families affected from thirty home fires in the past year, providing essential support such as food, lodging, and recovery services. Dedicated work of the Red Cross volunteers make possible to lift up the most vulnerable members of our community. I do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Red Cross Month and encourage all of the citizens of Capitola to reach out and support the humanitarian mission. If you have a representative, if I have a proclamation?
I just want to thank you on behalf of the Red Cross for this proclamation in our march, which is Red Cross Month. Also, I don't, we had Christmas morning, the fire down and the Red Cross, I talked to them and the Red Cross was there within an hour, making sure she had a place to live, some money to get some clothes and get started. Started, so they have also been here, right here in Capitola, helping out some of our disasters. By the way, I'm Sherry Robidoux. I'm a board member and a volunteer with Blood Services and a business owner in Capitola for fifty-two years. Thank you.
Bring us to number four, additional materials.
Staff received additional materials for items eight A through eight D for tonight's agenda. There were thirty-six emails for item eight A, six emails for eight B, three for eight C, and two emails for eight D. All materials were made available to the City Council before tonight's meeting. With the exception of the email relating to eight D, it came in five minutes ago and it is a part of the online agenda packet, but it is not printed in the back of the room. And it involves a withdrawal of an application from the Measure Q ward for the city's representation.
Thank you. Bring us to oral communications by the member of the public. We have three minutes for comments on consent items or items not on the regular agenda. Welcome. You'll have three minutes to speak and state your name if you wish.
I'm Clark Cochran, resident of Capitola. I want to talk again about RTC plans. The current bridge cost estimate is nine hundred and eighty million for the RTC meeting yesterday, let's say a billion. This includes replacing most all the bridges, including the trestle. When might that happen? Well, the trestle isn't even section ten or eleven. Trestle's in its own section eleven B. It's a separate section, but we know the rail is what's getting funded, not the trail. So it's critical to understand where that is. So obviously, this is a multi-decade, decades-long project. Fifteen, twenty, I don't know, longer than that. RTC is currently planning for the perfect, and this is their perfect, ultimate route. And I believe what virtually all Capitola residents want is a workable and usable trail. And they want it in their lifetime, not twenty years from now. So why not use, this is a suggestion, why not use ten million, and this is an RTC number, from the current funds to reinforce the trestle? It's an idea that stays on the corridor. But according to the meeting last night on the bridges, the RTC says rail and trail can't both be on the trestle. And this is due to periodic bridge maintenance that will close the trail. The Federal Railroad Administration states that inspections on railroad bridges are only needed once per year. So the RTC is saying, don't do it because for a couple days or a day per year, it's going to be blocked. They need to stop saying, why not? And we need to agree on how. How do we make these things happen? Another example, and this is their say no, the way they're looking at their plans. That example is the corridor along Jade Street Park at Mobile Homes. I'd sent you an email on that. They say it won't work because it isn't the perfect thirty-six vote right away. But the California Public Utilities Commission and the RTC themselves stated a twenty-seven-foot minimum is acceptable. The width, and I measured it, is twenty-nine feet. So we know that Capitola Municipal Code says trail has to be on the corridor. Only citizens can vote to change that. But, and you know they won't. So we need to push back on the RTC. We need to be practical. We need to be pragmatic. It isn't always going to be RTC perfect, but it's going to be acceptable. And we need to get a trail sooner rather than waiting twenty years. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome. Excuse me tonight, guys, I have a tickle in my throat. So I would like to talk about representative democracy. It's an interesting system. So we elect you and then you represent us. And many of our politicians across the country, and unfortunately in our city, they think that means they should represent other groups of constituents, the state, the county at large, other cities. And that's absolutely not how the system is designed. You are supposed to solely represent your constituents. If you look at the last three votes that Capitola participated in, the original Measure D vote, we all voted for rail and trail on the corridor. Then Measure L, obviously, trail on the corridor. The most recent Measure D vote was an overwhelming, even in Capitola, response saying voters want rail and trail on the corridor. Personally, I would love the RTC to pay for a great diversion onto Park. That's like right up my alley. You guys know what I'm into. That speaks to me. But it's wrong. And even though it's something I really like, ethically and morally, it would be incorrect for my beliefs to overcome what our city's voters have directly told you guys over a decade now. And then if you look at the responses over the last two years of meetings, you will see almost everyone arguing for trail through the village and not trail on the corridor is not a Capitola resident. And the few that are Capitola residents are members of a specific organization that is obviously funded by the energy industry guys, like that's why they hide their donors from us. It's why they use social good. It's why one of their board members is the CA Need Director, which is the energy industry's educational arm that does fun classes like the Joy of Fracking for elementary school students. These are not good people, y'all. There's like good people involved, but the people guiding this or not, Chevron, it's Conical Phillips, a little, you know, spacey. But I think you're getting my point. Do what the voters said. That is the right argument. It's why Margaux's on council. We should do what voters say. And if we're going to use that argument, we should make sure that we are doing what the voters have said. And then I'll throw in just at the end here, both District One and District Two voted for supervisors in 2024 who are for trail on the corridor. So even there, we have another set of data points from voters saying, this is what we believe. So let's honor the voters, folks, right? Thanks. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Sean Schrum. I'm a disabilities advocate in the county. One reason why you are going to want to get more input from locals on the rail trail is that members of the RTC and the staff have been started to be treated quite badly by some members of the public. The most recent meeting I went to, someone in RTC and staff let me know that they had arranged for a large person to meet them at the end of the meeting. And this isn't going to get any better. If RTC and staff are becoming concerned about their well-being, you're going to, you know, you should put a deputy at the next meeting. There were two individuals guarding the door who weren't with the RTC. They were slowing traffic, sort of jockeying so that you had to address one of them at a time. And, you know, they had no identifying clothing, t-shirt hat, no identifying paperwork. They didn't introduce themselves, just, you know, a couple of friendly-looking guys, smiling a lot, you know, like cults do, make you feel safe, so you, you know, you want to hear more about us, and handing out flyers that just had a QR code on it. And that's a very, those are used for very common scams to get your personal information. And they said something about some Capitola something neighbors, I don't know. And who knows who they were? But QR codes are a common scam for people in my age group and older. And, you know, so they're out to use their information for what? We don't know. No, no business, no nonprofit is going to operate in this way. So when you find out who their allies are, don't be surprised. There are people that come to local meetings who listen to presentations, who read the forms, who let you know what they're thinking. And there are others who try to stall the process the whole time or, you know, show up every time. There is no plan for this and that. We can't afford this and that. We have record-breaking, you know, grants for the rail and trail. So please take some precautions, get the information that you need. But as I said, there are people who are showing up, doing their part as citizens. The RTC is just doing their job. They were, you know, these were voted in. They're just doing a job. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to staff comments.
I don't think we have any comments this evening.
City Council comments.
Thank you. Just two questions, and I was wondering if we could, if it's okay just to get a brief overview on how the junior guard registration process is going? I know we implemented some new things. Are we able to just give a quick overview about that? How that's going, even though it's not on the agenda? Just a quick one?
Sure, I can give a very short overview. We completed junior guard registration with the new priority system that the council put in place last year. Interestingly, after the first day of registration, not every session was immediately full. Then on the next day, when the second-tier priority people were able to sign up, I think it was all, there were spots open for about forty-five minutes. So it was a little bit different process. Staff worked really hard, worked through the bugs, but I think overall, it was a successful registration program.
Thank you. And then just more of a question as I look through the forecasting report, looking forward to budget development and stuff. And this will be the first time I've been going through that. Is a part of that document also talk about staffing levels and like areas of responsibilities as we look at bringing on like new parks and stuff like that? Is that a part of the document or is that something that we can just, additional information that will come to us in time? Just a little bit of background, just trying to give, leave heads up, you know, for that, looking forward?
It is a part of the budget.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, y'all. Okay. So I attended the Metro meeting on February 28th, and we nominated a new chair and vice chair and also approved the board and committee's appointments for 2025. Metro is getting their fleet of hydrogen buses this summer, although only a few can be used in circulation at this time because of the limitation in the fueling, fueling infrastructure. We also received an update from California Integrated Travel Project, which provided recommendations on fair policy changes and an integrated ticketing system. All that is still kind of a collaborative work in progress, but sounds promising and is exciting. So there's more to come. I also attended my first AMBAG meeting in Monterey last night. So yes, I drove in the crazy rain and traffic going south after a full day of work. And we approved the board and committee appointments. We also authorized the executive director to execute an agreement for consultation services for the Paharo Valley Infrastructure Resiliency Design Study. And we received an update on the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan Sustainable Committee Strategy, Community Strategy from the Director of Planning, who is Heather, and just won an award, I think, in Sacramento last week. It's great to see kind of the big picture update on all the exciting transportation projects that are happening in the tri-county area. A piece of good news is that the AMBAG funding is secure for the upcoming budget year despite all of the federal cuts that are happening. They're planning five public meetings in April with two virtual options for community members who are interested in the Connect Monterey 2050. So I don't know if we can like post this somewhere, Jamie, where the public can have access to the meeting details. That'd be great. I saw, I was debating whether to address this or not on my way over, but I feel like I should. There's been a number of written comments jabbing at the fact that I read my comments, pre-written notes ahead of time. I would expect that our residents would want our council members, all of us, to read the packet, read the staff reports, read all of the factual information presented to us and make informed decisions. And as I'm reading the hundred pages of the packet, yes, I'm writing down questions. Yes, I'm writing down notes for myself. So that I do come to meetings, yes, with some notes and some ideas on how I would probably vote. Because most of the decisions I make are fact-based. If a hundred, if a hundred people come to our meeting, which would be a great, great turnout, that is still one percent of the population in Capitola. I just wanted to put that in perspective. I'm voted in on a platform and I'm here to represent the people who voted for me. So I will continue to do what I do. Thank you.
Over here. Great. Bring us to number seven, consent items. Items A through D.
I can move consent items seven A through D. I second.
Before then, I believe one of the council members wanted to address number D.
We pulled D, I had a couple of questions. Is that okay?
Yes. So I will move seven A through C. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bring us to number D, 2324 Audit Report. And I'll hand it over to council member here. That's in first questions.
Yeah, first thing, I just wanted to, as I was reading the report, just wanted to acknowledge, and Jim, thanks for being here this evening. Just, I saw on there that it was kind of surprising, I just wanted to point out about the, I guess, the track record that the city has regarding the financial reports. It sounds like we've been getting these awards or being noted as being in good fiscal standing since the year 2000. So this will be our 25th year, is that correct in a row?
That's correct.
And so, I mean, that would be, I think, all your tenure, Jamie, and then back probably through Rich Hill, and then probably through you, Jim. So I think that's something that should be acknowledged by our community and everything, by the good work that everybody's doing in the city, that we do have those kind of awards. And I was shocked, I didn't know that. And so I think that's something that needs to be pointed out. So thank you for that and thank you for all the hard work you do. A couple of just generalized questions. One thing that stood out to me was on the, one learning thing, sorry. Was there, on one of the budget line, it showed that it was a negative, like 1.2 million dollars, and I think it might have been the way things are accounted for in certain calendar years. And I just wondered if you could just elaborate on that. As it stood out to me, and kind of see parentheses on a budget, gets me concerned.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for that question. That was due to a timing of how we rolled over encumbrances. So when you look at the budget amount in there, it includes encumbrances, so obligations, contracts we're already obligated to. From the prior year, we had about $3 million. We were late rolling them over. So those expenses were hitting those old encumbrances kind of in the wrong fiscal year. So it shows up as a negative this year. But it was because of a positive from the prior year. So we had conversations with the auditors to make sure that we get those done in a more timely manner so that doesn't happen going forward.
All right, perfect. And then the company that we use to do it, is this their first year of providing audit services for us?
Yes.
And then is that rotational basis? So, and is there like a regulation around that?
There's not really a regulation. It's a best management practice to rotate every five years. So we had been with the previous auditor, actually six years, as we came through the pandemic. So we issued RFP last year and Chauvin and Associates was the selected ones. This is their first year and they'll have four more.
So over this 25-year period that I just highlighted earlier, we would have like five different, five different auditors looking at that. So it wasn't just a subjective thing from one auditor. Okay. And then I think I just had one more. No, that was all I had. And thanks again for all your hard work and what you guys do.
Thank you. Any further council comment or questions? Seeing none, any public comment? Public comment? I'll be looking for a motion.
I can move consent item seven D.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That brings us to item eight, general governance. Eight, placeholder town hall plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the rail trail project town hall plan. So the purpose of this is to introduce the plan for the rail trail town hall. And our recommended action is the City Council approve the proposed town hall meeting plan and outreach strategy. The background on this is that the February 13th City Council meeting, the council reviewed options for the coastal options for the Coastal Rail Trail to improvements along the Park Avenue right-of-way. During that meeting, the council did not take action on the Park Avenue right-of-way, and the motion was to postpone the decision and directed staff to host a town hall meeting to cover updates on the use of the trestle, the long-term impacts, impacts of potential litigation for Measure L, and an overview of the Rail Trail Project impacts in Capitola. So on March 4th, the RTC hosted an independent town hall, and the next upcoming item for the RTC is that the county expects to consider authorizing engineering contract for the Park Avenue design late April. Next slide, please. So what staff has put together is a proposal for having a town hall meeting on Wednesday, April 2nd, and the time would be from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and the location would be the New Brighton Middle School Performing Arts Center. Next slide, please. For that meeting, we would notice it as a city council meeting. That way, all city council members could attend. The city council would not take any action or give any formal direction that night. The informational materials would be posted on our website 12 days in advance, so that would be March 21st. The notices and promotions, we really want to get the word out to the public on this. So there'd be press releases, social media, city website, digital newsletters, and then we'd also propose to mail postcards to all residents of the city of Capitola, and then also the project stakeholders. On our online portal, where the information will be, there'll also be the opportunity for the public to submit questions from March 19th to March 31st. Once we've gotten all those questions, we'll take a few days ahead of the meeting to go through those and be able to draft responses that we can share at that meeting. We'd like to keep this, it'll be accessible, as a town hall will be recorded on the city website and YouTube channel after the meeting. We're still looking into the possibility of live streaming. Next. This is a slide showing the agenda. So we'll have a welcome by the mayor, and then the facilitator introductions. We'll have a presentation by city staff, RTC staff, and the county. Then we'll go over the pre-submitted questions that we've received and answers. And then we'll open up the public comment and question period. For that, we'll have speaker cards, and each speaker can speak up to two minutes. And then that will go for 45 minutes, and then staff responses will have some time there for any questions that were brought up during the public comments. And then for this meeting, we really want to keep this accessible for all and have a defined start and end time in case people need babysitters, or just so that they can plan their day accordingly around any work schedules, or any items of importance. So they were proposing a 5:30 to 7:30 meeting. Next slide, please. So the town hall topics are listed here, and they're the topics that the City Council had asked for at the meeting on the 13th. There was a request that we get into the possible litigation around Measure L. We're recommending that that not be discussed during open session. Next slide, please. So for next steps, we're suggesting a special city council meeting on April 17th for a final decision on the Park Avenue alignment of the rail trail. And our recommended action tonight is to approve the proposed town hall meeting plan and outreach strategy. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for that very important update. I'll start questions on this side.
Yeah, I had a question. Well, more of a comment would be if we can look into it being live. I think that would be really important, but I'm glad to know that it's going to be recorded, seeing how the other one was not. Would you mind explaining how speaker cards work?
Certainly. So the intent behind the speaker cards was ensure, to ensure that, you know, one group doesn't sort of get in line and occupy the entire time, the speakers. And so during the presentation, and then the answers to the pre-submitted questions during that portion of the town hall, staff was proposing to accept speaker cards. And then the facilitator would be drawing them randomly, probably calling a couple of names in advance so people could line up, but just so that there wasn't, you know, so everyone had the same shot at speaking.
So kind of like a lottery, almost?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. And then in regards to the staff recommendation of not discussing potential litigation, is that just due for?
Yeah, it's, I discuss legal strategy and legal interpretation with my clients. You are my clients. I would never discuss that. I mean, my communications with you are privileged. I would never discuss my legal interpretation with my clients and 100 other people. And you make the decision about what the city's position and what the city's next steps will be. And we should do that in closed session.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yeah, thank you. I just have one question. I'm curious if staff foresee's any potential issues with capacity at the venue. I was at the last town hall held by the RTC, and it was pretty crowded. I'm just curious if we're going to do a lot of promotion of this. I know there's a lot of interest on the topics.
Yeah, so the question was about the capacity issues potentially in New Brighton Performing Arts Center. It's certainly potentially an issue. We're proposing a different format, so it's not going to be, the room isn't going to be occupied by tables and sort of stations. It'll be, it'll be chairs. It is the largest venue in the city, so it's what we have. We will be doing our best to livestream it. As Katie mentioned, it really comes down to just the technology. Obviously, this room is set up to livestream. We do have, we have contracted with CTV to be there and do that, and they technically can do it. It'll just be a question of integrating with the room's technology. So that's, that's 99%, I mean, it's 100% the goal. We're 90% sure we can get it there.
Thank you.
Take it to this side.
Do you know the capacity for the room? Because I think the last open house was like 250 people.
I don't know the capacity offhand. My guess is probably it's close to 250 to 300. But that's, honestly, that's a guess, and I don't want the rooms rated.
And another comment, you know, that I heard from the gentleman is safety and security. Will we have our PD there for support to ensure that there's no one blocking the door, or just ensure there's no intimidation?
Yes, we could definitely do that. We need to ensure that it's a public meeting, it's a public city council meeting. So obviously, people need to be able to come and go as they please and not feel like they have to run the gauntlet to get in. So we will ensure easy access for everybody to come and go, also for, just frankly, safety purposes as well. So.
Yes, that was my experience. I had to wait in line to get in, and then I realized, like, why am I in this line? And I just came and walked in the door.
Waiting in line, if legally, there can be no barrier to access a city council meeting. And so there will be no barrier to access the city council meeting. If there's a wait because there's a crowd and people are looking for seats, that's one thing, but there will be no barriers to get into the meeting.
Another question is, I know during the open house, the RTC had many of these topics on the tables for people to ask questions and discuss. This is a very ambitious, we have a very ambitious, ambitious list of items and topics that we are going to cover in two hours. Any consideration to pare that down a little? Because isn't it a little redundant that we just had to open, well, they just had an open house to answer many of these questions?
So this is up to the council, you know. We received a presentation, I think, at our meeting on February 13th that was probably, I'm guessing, nearly 40 minutes long about the Park Avenue alignment. So there's obviously a lot of details just on that one topic. We do have an ambitious list of topics. So if the council, the plan right now is to provide the information about each one of those different topics, it may be relatively high level, and then let the questions dive in further. However, if the council did want to pare back the topic list, obviously, we could provide more information. There is also a balancing act between, if you have a room full of 250 people, it's not necessarily the best practice to talk for 60 minutes, for example, and, you know, people tend to lose attention. So I think there's only so much amount of time that people are willing to sit and absorb material. So that 35 minutes is kind of a sweet spot. We obviously could stretch it out, or the council could winnow back the topics, help facilitate sort of more in-depth discussion.
Great. Julia, would you mind pulling back up the list of topics? I know one thing that Councilmember Morgan highlighted in her motion was also, I just would like to say funding slash budget, because I know budget was an emphasis also that we were going to be looking at. So if that could be, I know that was part of the request that we talked about, so if that can just be highlighted in there. I don't know, I think it was part of the whole thing, but if that's not an add-on, I would think if we just make sure that they have that budget information would be helpful. And then just question about process. Where do you see council asking questions? Or, I mean, it's going to be a council meeting, what's the process that is going to be set up? Or are we just looking at strictly as a town hall meeting, and council will come back and we'll have our questions at the 17th meeting or something like that?
So as proposed, it really is a town hall, and council members being noticed as a council meeting, the mayor would be giving the intro speech, and council members could participate as audience members. If the council would like to have the opportunity to ask questions, we certainly could adjust the format and provide that opportunity. But that wasn't, as proposed right now, it's kind of more of a town hall.
I would just open up to my other council members if they think that's something that would be important if we limited it to two questions we had, or if we wanted to just wait until the 17th, just an idea to what you guys, what your thoughts were.
I'd rather not take the public's time during that meeting. It's a town hall for the public. I would rather not ask or answer questions and save it for our meeting.
I think I would like to have at least a point where the council members could make a comment. Wouldn't have to mean for questions, but either a quick comment or some deliberation.
I'm leaning towards not having city council comments or questions, just because it's such a jam-packed agenda already. And I think the purpose is really to facilitate questions and information to and from the public. And we, you know, we can talk about this at any time during normal city council meetings or special city council meetings, but I think, given just how much information we have to cover and the questions that we have and how many people probably show up, I'd rather just listen more than talk personally.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreeance with that. I would, yeah, rather more of the time be spent on public questions, especially if we're going to have the floor like in a week or so after. That's probably what, how I would sway.
Perfect. And then my other question is, we have a commitment from the staff and RTC that the items that were listed on there, that will be, information will go out to the community, and do you have that exact timeframe?
Yes, we did have a meeting with the RTC, and we went over this topic list, and we gave them the deadline of next Friday. The city will be developing the website, and they've indicated that they could have the material that we need. A few of the items are city staff-led, a couple of them are county, and then the rest are RTC. So everyone's aware of the deadline and committed to getting it up by the 21st, if not sooner.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Great. That'll bring us to public comment. Ready wishing to speak? I'll have to three minutes. Welcome and state your name if you wish.
Good evening. My name is Nels Westman. I am a proud Capitola resident. I see one of the topics up there is what's going to happen on segments 10 and 11 of the rail trail. I certainly hope that what the current plan is now regarding Capitola Village and the trail is going to be clearly explained to the public, because in my opinion, that's the elephant in the room. That's what we want to hear. So I know we can't engage in a back and forth at this, but it's my strong hope that that will be laid out clearly to the residents of Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. I'm Matt Farrell, and while I'm not a current resident of Capitola, I did live on River View for a number of years, and would commute through Capitola, living in Seacliff while I attended the university. So I'm very familiar with the value of Park Avenue as a corridor for cyclists in our county. And I would encourage you to make the discussion of that aspect of this project a priority in the town hall, because it seems like a very time-critical project. There's a grant in place for that, and it's been explained, I think, in previous meetings, that there's a time constraint on being able to move forward with the whole project and to include Park Avenue in that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to throw out the concept of being a little perplexed on why we're talking about a meeting on April 17th to review an agenda item on the realignment of Park Avenue. Before we've even had the town hall, we've got an agenda item created that could potentially put you all in a position of being asked to violate your oath of office. So Measure L is one of the items on the topic list, and that's great. And I fully understand that talking about anticipated litigation is not appropriate. But the measure itself is currently codified in municipal code and is something that we have to follow. It's the law, and it's there. So if something comes up at the town hall, that would indicate that the agenda item for the 17th would put you in that position, I would ask you to reconsider that agenda item, rather than just already talking about having deliberation about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members, staff. I'm Paula Bradley, a resident of Capitola. Thank you for scheduling the town hall for the Coastal Rail Trail Project. The ambition, the agenda is very ambitious. I hope with the materials provided, it will provide the information to lay some of the issues to rest, particularly the Park Avenue trail alignment and Measure L. The Park Avenue trail is not a trail in the village. It's not a part of the trestle project. It's a simple 0.7-mile trail, separate from the other issues. The path is primarily in the RTC right-of-way and will be funded by the RTC. Sadly for Capitola, some misinformed people do not see the opportunity for improved safety for bicycles and pedestrians, and are muddling it to make it look like something it's not. The Park Ave realignment is an opportunity to have a safe, multi-use path that we can all use long before the Rail Trail Project is built. I ride Park Avenue frequently, and this project is an opportunity for a less expensive, easier and faster to build, less disruptive to butterfly habitat, and more scenic than the path would be in the rail right-of-way in the gully. It'll have better neighborhood access and lighting that will make it safer at night. Please hold the meeting and provide the information. Do not delay further, or we miss the opportunity for this Park Avenue trail. Without the Coastal Rail Trail, there will not be any trail for 10 Without the Coastal Rail Trail, there will not be any trail for 10-plus years. Please move forward with the project and I look forward to the town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name's Kristen and the town hall kind of feels like a step back just because I am worried about the deadline. If it's not a step back, great. I just want the project to move forward. That's the main thing that I wanted to express in regards to the agenda item of whether or not to hold said town hall. I thought RTC did a really great job at the meeting that they hosted and they did have a lot of good information available to the public. So with the rest of the time, I'd like to speak about the rail trail. So the rail trail is such an incredible opportunity to provide a more livable environment for yourself, your family and future generations. As a public health professional, it cannot be understated the profound impact to your health physically, mentally, emotionally and socially to provide safe passage for recreation, reflection and community. Capitola is in a position that requires a response to climate change by focusing on design principles where people's daily needs can be met within a short walk or cycle. Some of us can experience it now, but it can be so much better through safety improvements like the rail trail. As a cyclist and pedestrian, I've had several near misses with cars and do not always feel safe crossing the street. Please protect traffic calming solutions like the rail trail to encourage walkable and bikeable communities in line with Capitola's proposed strategic planning core values of dynamic innovation, resilient community and responsible growth that future generations can enjoy. Thank you for opening up this opportunity for comment and I just hope that you can please move forward with the rail trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Apparently there's a sign-in sheet that moved away. Good evening, council members. My name is Scott. I was raised in Capitola and I'm a proud former Capitola junior guard. I moved away to develop my career in earth science, environmental compliance and planning. And that career has led me back to Capitola and the greater Santa Cruz area. I'm here tonight to urge your support for the rail trail project and specifically a feature that supports passenger rail. Car-centric infrastructure like roads and parking is incredibly land-intensive and as this governing body is well aware, Capitola has precious little space to grow, arguably none at all. And yet grow we must to meet current requirements placed upon us as well as our regional reality. Providing rail transit space along a corridor that won't take away from the current road network allows residents and local business customers to come to Capitola without stressing the currently stressed roadway system. Rail transit represents an investment in the health of our community. It supports access into our economy. It is space-efficient and it is better for the environment. I for one can't wait to have my morning coffee, walk out my front door to the rail stop, read a book while a train carries me along my morning commute. When I get home that day, I will have never entered a car, never sat in traffic. My doctor will be happy that I got my daily steps in. I won't tell him about the pastry that I had with the coffee. That is a future that we can have and importantly, that is something that we can leave for future generations. If the question tonight is to whether or not to support a town hall and continue the conversation, I urge you to approve. Do not delay. Please support a project that is for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening and thank you. My name's Carl Seibert and I think that guy stole all my lines. I'm a resident of SoCal but a proud graduate of that school up on the hill so long ago I think you'd have to cut off one of my arms and count the rings. After that, I caused a lot of trouble here. I'm going to go over to the police department and apologize for things that happened a long time ago. As he said, consider this, I know there's a lot of faldorol about the cost. Well, look at those costs as an investment, not just now, but in the future, one that generations in the future will thank us for making. So like I said, this gentleman said a lot that I would have wanted to say too, but I will add this. If it's only a trail for pedestrians and bikes, how many employment opportunities does that afford as opposed to light passenger rail in addition to the trail, green jobs, many of which will be not just jobs that people will have, but careers that will benefit the entire county and our community. So anyway, thank you very much and please have a bigger town hall meeting. Thanks again.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Sean Schrum. I'm a disability advocate. One in four people in America identifies as having a disability. Most people end up having a combination of symptoms or conditions. The Elderly and Disabled Transportation Advisory Committee and the Santa Cruz County Commission on Disability, they're not being asked about the zero emission train project. You'd think they would be. They're being asked for other information from the RTC. They can address, you know, as individuals, but I was told in a meeting today that, you know, that it's not, that they're not approaching it as a group. You know, we are all more likely to lose some of our hearing, some of our sight, some of our mobility long before we lose the nerve to use them. And anyone who thinks they're going to drive forever, well, maybe they're lucky enough to have a spouse or a parent who will, or an adult child who may drive them around. But I'm less concerned about how or where the trail goes, how it looks, as I am for people movers for the disability community. And if there is no, if there is no train, then that will disenfranchise people south county from, you know, quality college education, quality internships, you know, jobs and, you know, there will never be a, there's never been a part of a large system that's been rail-banked that has come back. So that's, there was a group, a lot of people will know that there was a group of investors that tried to buy the rail corridor from the RTC after the RTC purchased it. And when they, when they were turned down, they sued the RTC. And then they reformed as a poorly-named nonprofit called Greenway. And their chairperson left and ran for office so that he could get on the RTC and he did. And he did a lot of damage. Say things like, we need buses. That's what people need. And then when Metro finally got the long-needed boost in funding, long after the RTC had the extremely long list of its shortcomings, he redirected that to roads. So be sure and reach out to the people who need us the most, please.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi again, Art Cochran. Maybe there was some misunderstanding in what I said earlier about trail. There will never be a trail without rail. Rail gets the federal and state funding. The trail comes along with it. So to think that there's a trail without a rail is a total misperception. My statement was that because the rail is going to take a billion dollars and take many decades, can we try and achieve a trail sooner? Not instead of, but just sooner so that we can use it. And then we will have the rail when it's paid for and we get that as the long-term future. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. So I think the town hall meeting is a great idea. I did have something, I was thinking about listening to what was going to be going on at the meeting. One of the things was people were going to be able to write cards to ask questions. I think it's important that we are able to know where the people who are asking the questions from, whether they're residents of Capitola, SoCal, Santa Cruz, because as we know, this is a Capitola vote. This really is not a Santa Cruz, SoCal vote or Watsonville. So I think it would be helpful to know for the people listening to the questions, where the questions come from and who wrote them.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, bring it back to the council for deliberation.
I just have a quick comment, less of a deliberation, but just to make it clear to all of the residents who came out today and who were involved in the previous city council member discussing Park Avenue that I previously recused on the item discussing Park Avenue, Park Avenue portion of the trail. And I'm not recusing from this discussion for two reasons. First, because I do not need to recuse from discussions regarding the entire trail due to the public generally exception to the FPPC regulations. And second, because I am moving from my current address on Saturday and thus will no longer live within 500 feet of any portion of the trail on Park Avenue. Thank you.
I'd like to revisit maybe purring down the topics. I feel like there's a lot. And I think, I think the majority of the time maybe we should spend on, I think, obviously Park Ave is the issue at hand that we need to make a decision on. The other stuff, I feel like we, as council, as our community, we should maybe have standing meetings, standing maybe Q quarter, like every quarter or every half a year, have some type of revisit this, right? We should revisit this every half-year, every quarter so that as more information comes in, we are all in the process of just keeping it transparent and keeping updated on what is happening. So with segment 10, I mean, I deeply care about because that's the side of the town I live in. I really want to make sure we address that and work with our mobile homeowners to ensure that we can move forward with that project. So that needs to be an ongoing conversation, but it's not the conversation we need to have now. So can we revisit this in three months or six months and have this ongoing conversation? We shouldn't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be talking about this a year out or two years out when there is a project to decide on, is my point.
Any other discussion?
Well, I agree with Councilmember Orbach. I think while the, there are multiple important parts to this, we, I'm afraid that our issue, which is, or our item, which is this Park Avenue segment, is getting muddied. So if there is a way for us to figure out how to make sure that we're prioritizing the Park Avenue project and then, I mean, obviously the funding, funding slash budget is going to be part of that. And then, I mean, the trestle, yes, it should be touched upon, but I don't see how that could take up too much time. I think it should be addressed. Is there something else you'd want to omit from the list or is everybody fine with the list or? I think the timeline there is important. Sure, ongoing maintenance cost, funding, Park Ave, trestle, everyone wants to talk about. I don't think we should talk about the mobile home encroachments. Obviously Measure L, we've decided on that already. That's still a long list. We're just taking out a few, but I think it's, that can be helpful, just taking out a few things.
Just a point of clarification. We had a motion and a second and we agreed on what the agenda item was going to be. Is that open for deliberation to bring it back to change a motion and are they seconded and everything?
I'd like to jump in on it and I still think all of these things are very important. I would like to leave them all on. There are so many things going on with this project, you know, from segment 10 all the way through. So I believe we need to see them all and we're still going to hear from folks from the public. They're going to want to ask their own questions. So I'd like to see that as it is.
Yeah, I mean, if that is something that, I think we've done a very good job from a standpoint, I think from a council standpoint in the last couple of weeks. I've attended meetings at mobile home parks that are being affected. I've attended meetings about people in the village. I've attended meetings on people on Park Avenue and the community wants to come together. They want to have a discussion and I think it'd be ill-advised for us now at tonight's meeting to switch it up and change what an agenda item is that we've just told people for the last three weeks, don't worry, we have it. An RTC planned a meeting that wasn't really what we asked for and there was some pushback from that. And I think, I think our city manager did a very good job in being very clear what the expectation with the meeting was supposed to be and then the meeting is what it is. And then tonight to change again in the middle of what the agenda item was that was completely communicated, I would think would be a huge mistake.
Yeah, I'll just say that I also believe that this agenda is very ambitious and all these topics are obviously very important, but I would agree with Councilmember Orbach that more meetings would be better because each one of these could easily be its own town hall. And if, if people want to cover them all at once, I don't have a strong issue with that, but I just want to say like, from my perspective, that probably wouldn't be the most impactful way to present the information because each one of these issues is somewhat complicated, to say the least. And you'd just be touching on the surface of each one of these. So I'll just leave, leave my comments there, but either way, I would say that it would be worth scheduling now additional meetings to cover some of these topics more in-depth as a city.
I think that, you know, we did have a little breakdown on one of the slides about timeframe for presentation, pre-submitted questions, public comment, staff response. We're allotting for two hours, you know, out of respect for everybody's time. And I think that if the public can get on board and if the council can get on board with just really setting the tone of those timeframes and trying to get as much information during that time, then we can touch on everything. I don't want anybody to feel slighted or like we're not covering something, but do keep in mind that there, that this, this isn't over. There's going to continue to be other items on this and many more neighborhoods that are going to be a part of these decisions. So there will be more coming down the pike and I just think this is kind of the first one we're doing, the first real big one. So let's keep it to what we stated and go by the timeline. Public, give us some grace, all right? Thanks.
I'm fine. If our, the majority of our council want all of those topics on there, I'm fine with having all of those topics on there, but I agree that we're not going to be able to give it the time and attention it deserves. So just have that expectation. It's going to be a very superficial, probably overview of all of these topics when in fact, like my colleagues have said, each one of these things can take probably two hours if we really want to dive deep. But I hope we can all agree that we need more regular, you know, quarterly, every half a year. half a year, kind of updates on the various phases of these projects as they are all evolving, and we don't have all the information because it's an ever-evolving project that's been going on for decades, that we continue to have updates.
Yeah, I'd like to just echo that. Be it that this issue has been talked with our city of the Park Avenue since we were told from RTC July, and it was brought to our city council as, and to the public in February, I would definitely totally support the more transparency and more communication about this on a quarterly basis, so our community is not surprised that conversation had gone on for seven to eight months at a period of time that we haven't been informed in, that it creates a rush at it all of a sudden for a timeline of a grant. So I appreciate your comments and look forward to working with you on those meetings.
Great. I have faith in our staff. They do a great job. I think we won't be able to get everything done, but it's a great start, and we'll build on everything from here. So with that, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll move the recommended action, approve the proposed town hall meeting plan and outreach strategy.
I second that.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye. Motion passes.
I'm bringing this to item B, public outreach long-term plan for the Capitola Wharf.
Okay. I will jump into the long-term plan for the Capitola Wharf. I'm really excited to present this item to you tonight. We've all been enjoying the wharf in its present configuration, and now we're going to start the conversation about what's, what's next? What is the future of the wharf? So tonight, we're going to introduce six draft concepts for the long-term plan, and then hoping to get direction from the city council to initiate a robust public outreach process. Next slide, please. So back in September, September 12th, we moved forward with a contract with Fuse Architecture for their outreach, planning, and design services for the long-term wharf plan. Next slide, please. So our plan is that once, after we review the six concepts tonight, the public outreach would be to have two community meetings in April. One would be in person. It'd be an interactive community meeting, probably at New Brighton, and also to host a virtual meeting. Both of those, the dates are to be determined. We'll also launch a public survey starting on April 1st and going through the whole month of April, so for 30 days. And we'll have hard copies of the survey available to the public at City Hall and the library. Also, an important piece of this is meeting with all of our different committees, commissions, and local stakeholder groups. So our plan is to, during the month of April and May, during their regularly scheduled meetings, for staff to present the concepts to those groups and then get feedback, and then we'll put their feedback into a summary. We also encourage anyone participating in the stakeholder groups to also feel free to participate in the community meetings as well as the public surveys. So, next slide, please. So for this next section of slides, we're going to go over the six concepts. Tonight, we have Dan Townsend and Dan Gomez of Fuse Architecture, who are going to walk through these next slides with, within the presentation, and then I'll wrap it up at the end. The one thing I really want to stress tonight is that we're bringing these to city council to make sure that we have decent concepts to start the conversation. By no means are we looking for direction tonight on moving forward with any concepts. This is really so that we can start having the conversations with the community, see, get meaningful feedback, and then we'll plan to return to the city council in June. So this is really concepts. We'll, we'll have open ears during the whole process for new ideas. And with that, I'm going to have Fuse Architecture come up and speak. So this is Dan Townsend.
I thank you, Katie. Like Katie said, I'm Dan Townsend with Fuse Architects. I'm here tonight with my business partner, Dan Gomez, and our lead designer, Courtney Christensen, who have been the design team on this project. Thank you for the time, and I'll move forward with the options. The council should know that all of these options were discussed with the project engineer for the wharf, Moffett Nickel, on a conceptual basis. All six options are feasible from their perspective, albeit each one, each option has different implications structurally for the wharf, but they are all feasible from a structural standpoint. So option one, I think I'll look at my own papers. I don't know if I could read from this angle. Each option, there's three slides. We're going to be looking at the first slide for option one, and each of the options will be an overlook of the wharf, some images. The second slide will be kind of a focus with some colors, colored highlights on areas that are the major differences between the options. And then the third slide will be photographs that are not specific designs, but they are to show design intent. So option number one is public open space with enhanced public realm. The wharf will have all areas open to public, no leased space. Public gathering infrastructure, including benches, stage, shade structures, additional public bathroom at the head of the wharf, at the end of the wharf, is proposed here. And option, or part D is to remove the boat hoist. We can move forward to the second slide for option one. The highlighted areas there for, for this, this option, the key points are the stage, the new public restroom, it's highlighted there in kind of that orange color. There is a fish cleaning station. That's an existing fish cleaning station that is nearly complete. And then the park picnic areas and benches and tables there are more of an open concept. We can go to the next slide. These are just some images we put together to illustrate the ideas for the benches and seating areas and in the public restroom. You can also use the existing public restroom at the beginning of the wharf as an example of a new public restroom. We can move forward to the next slide. Option two. Option two is similar to option one, and this comes with the introduction of mobile kiosks. And you can move forward to the next slide, please. We still have the fish cleaning station, the public restroom, the picnic area, and, and the mobile kiosk. We're, we're presenting four mobile kiosk options in addition to, it would be an add to option number one. And highlighted at the end there is the stage. We can go to the next slide. There's the highlighted there, the mobile kiosks are in purple there. So this is some ideas for vendors that might use the mobile kiosk for boat rentals, kayak rentals, food and drink. We can move forward to option number three. Option number three is to enhance public realm and have a fixed fishing concession. Fixed low-cost structure for fishing concessions with boat rental. This, this option retains the hoist. It has boat storage, mooring buoys, digging service, and boat repair. Part B there is public gathering infrastructure, much like the other two options. We're introducing a fixed lifeguard station in this option as well. You can move forward to the next slide, please. This highlights the key, key points in this. The stage is still there. The enclosed boat rental and repair building is, is the new part to this option here and fishing concession. Lifeguard station is in orange or yellow there. And the public restroom, just note, note that there's a public restroom in all six options proposed here. The hoist remains in this option, and the fish cleaning station that's there will remain.
If I can just add to this one, this is very similar to, if you could go back, Julia. This is similar to what is on the wharf today for the fishing concession, but there, it would be enclosed in one structure, and then with the addition of a lifeguard station, public bathroom and stage, but very similar, how the, how the wharf is functioning today would be similar with this concept.
Thank you, Katie. And the next slide, please. The intent for the structures, that they are lightweight, they are weather resistant, their materials are chosen that would withstand the ocean environment. Option four. Conceptual layout for option four is to enhance the public realm, have a fixed fishing concession, and mobile vendors. So the last two options kind of combined here. So we can move to the next slide here to look at the highlighted areas. One difference you'll note here is that the structures, the lightweight structures proposed for the fishing concession, concession and mobile vendors is moved off to one side of the wharf. The lifeguard station is there, the public restroom is there, the, the hoist remains for boat rentals, fishing station remains, and then we're introducing the four mobile kiosks in this option as well. The next slide, please. And here are some examples, illustrations of, of what these buildings might look like. We're looking at low-cost, lightweight steel frame structures that have durable materials that would be ocean-ready, ocean environment-ready, I'll say. Thank you. And option five. Option five is to enhance the public realm with fixed fishing concession and flexible market space. So in, in this option, you can see that the buildings are, the footprint of the buildings are more in this, towards the center of the, head of the wharf there. And then we can flip to the next slide. And you can see the location of the buildings and the open market, so that the idea is there is the 2,862 square foot space there is an, is an open market for a variety of vendors and more flexible space. The lifeguard stand is there, the fishing concession, boat rentals is there at the 1,400 square foot number in blue, and the public restroom, hoist, stage, and fishing station, or fish cleaning station. The next slide, please. This is a couple of images that we put together to, to help to bring a picture here. This is also lightweight structures, but they'd be more open air during storm, these are fixed structures, storm events, they'd be, we'd be able to batten down the hatches with these ideas, but they'd be more open air for those flexible vendors within that space. And option six. Option six is much like what was there prior to the storms, permanent structures, replacing buildings, and public space. So we are looking at fishing concession here with boat rental, repair, fixed boat storage, mooring buoys, digging service, and hoist, fixed all-weather buildings with a full restaurant, lifeguard station, public gathering, infrastructure, including benches, stage, and shade structures, and additional public restroom at the end. We can flip to the next page. Thank you. So the larger blue square, the one that's more square in this image to the right, is the full restaurant. And there are some images on the next page that illustrate what that might look like. Everybody that's been here for a while knows what the former restaurant used to look like. So this is, this option is much like what we have had in the past with, there's one image with a roof deck on, on the restaurant. These are all options to discuss. So lifeguard station, public restroom, this is all of it, with benches, the stage, and all the things from the other options. And the images here just show the idea that these are permanent structures, that they would be closed down in storm events. That's the folding glass doors that are, that are shown there. The restaurant would be a, potentially a multi-level restaurant as it was before, and weather-ready materials.
So tonight, we're looking for direction on going out to public outreach on the six concepts. And if there's any changes you'd like us to make before we go out to public, we're happy to hear those ideas tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
That's exciting stuff and a good presentation. Yeah, we'll bring it to council questions.
I have just a couple of questions. My first question is regarding option number six. I'm curious if having a larger, heavier infrastructure like a full restaurant would have any impact, positive or negative, on the stability and longevity of the wharf itself?
It would absolutely have impact. Like I said at the beginning, we've discussed all six of these options with our consulting engineers. At this stage, without actual building designs, it's hard to say, but they do say it is feasible. But there will be some modifications that will need to be made to the structure below the deck. So most of the studies we are doing now are consulting with the engineers, but our proposals have all been, you know, above deck at this, at this point. But yes, you're, you're right, there are implications to the structure, but they are feasible.
And, and that would, it's not going to make it stronger, right? I'm just thinking like, because I thought I heard something with the Santa Cruz wharf when part of that fell, that it had to do with the weight wasn't on it, keeping it together. But it would, like heavier infrastructure would make it less or more robust to, like wave events, for example, in general.
Yeah, good, good question. Yes, the, if, if option six is the one that's chosen, and it is a, they're permanent structures, restaurant, boats, boat storage, the consulting engineers would design the structure of the wharf to withstand the loads that, that those buildings present. So to answer, would it be stronger? It would be absolutely stronger for, for that new use that was proposed, correct?
Thank you. And my other question was, and it's fine if you don't have an answer for this, but with option four, I just, I noticed the buildings, the lifeguard building and fishing concession were moved directly to the edge of the wharf, and I was wondering if there is any specific reason to do that, because I saw that it removed viewing benches to accommodate that.
There, there was. And as you probably noted, that's the only option where the buildings are shown to one side of the wharf. This is something that our design team and staff discussed heavily, because we agree with you. There, there are, the views on the wharf are great from all sides, and we were looking at the Santa Cruz wharf and, and took note that all of the buildings are pushed to one side, effectively eliminating good views towards Steamers Lane. So most of our options are proposing buildings down the middle so that that, the views can be from all sides. But we thought it was a good idea to at least propose one where the buildings are to one side to show more public space in front of those buildings.
Got it. Thank you.
I'll just add that if, if the council would rather see all the buildings in the middle, we, that's a change we could make before this goes out.
That's a member, Jensen.
Yeah, thank you. So thanks for the presentation. Guest question to staff. With option one and two, we have to redo our, like, LCP regarding having the amenities that are noted in our LCP about having recreational activities and fishing and stuff like that?
So our LCP, our local coastal program, talks about an active fishing wharf. And so if we were to move forward with one in option one, which was just open space, there would continue to be fishing allowed on the wharf, just, there wouldn't be boat rental, but there are references to those uses of boat rental. And so I do think we'd have to consider updating our LCP if we were to make that amendment.
Yeah, when I read through, I saw that it was noted there in a couple of different places, so I just would want to be there. Let's see, the next thing, I think, following up with Councilmember Pedersen, just comment, I, I have some concerns about not creating an environment that you could completely walk around to all the sides of the wharf. That's just, I'd be open to other comments around that. And then a question, if you- And then a question, if you had the two-story restaurant idea mezzanine, would there have to be ADA accessibility, like elevator?
There would. There would need to be ADA accessibility.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. I didn't see that noted. I guess you accommodate that in, in some of your budget line items.
In the estimates, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I did want to clarify for you when you brought up the open space. The number, the first option, we, we put that out there because we really wanted to start with, we wanted to show the whole spectrum of what could happen on the wharf. So that is why that is included as the open space.
And then the only thing, a next step, so I'd want to encourage, we list out, you know, boards, commissions, stakeholder groups, and as previous outlined, if we could make a big focus on somehow tapping into the youth, maybe work with the school district, maybe their leadership. And also, I think we should tap into our seniors and our senior center and make sure we reach out to them, both at, you know, the seniors, but also at the senior center themselves to see if they would be involved and wanted to be involved in the process. I know they quite a lot use the wharf. And just as outreach, I know you probably meant to cover that in there, but just so we can make sure that those are highlighted. And other than that, I was impressed with your guesses, six different options, and looking forward to a long road, but I'm moving forward.
I have one more thing. If there are members of the public that are here that, that are here to make comments about the options or have other options, we encourage you to come to these public outreach programs. These are going to be excellent. You'll have the opportunity to comment on the six options. And if you have another idea also, we want to hear that as well. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just have the last two questions. One thing I think would be helpful too, I think was option, whatever, the option that has the lower level boat storage, looking at, and I think you guys do a great job of having beautiful pictures. I have a hard time seeing the difference between what those two could look like. So maybe a little more emphasis on what is a lower grade boat bait shop kind of atmosphere than when we get into level five? I think that'd be important to note that and to show that. And then the only thing, just a suggestion, if these plans get ready against now, maybe taking the dimensions off them might confuse people, start to think that, you know, what these exact measurements mean, something I think, the square footage of where they are. But the red lines on the drawing is showing exact dimensions and stuff like that. I think it's great for some of it, but it just cloudies it up a little bit to me. So just have it more general, you know, storage area and open area. So that's just a couple of comments. So I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. That, we'll note that on, on, on the plans. We, we do that primarily for in-house purposes to make sure it all works and that we have proper aisle widths and things, but thank, thank you for that note.
I think my question is really more for the city. These options, they're all so beautiful renderings. I love all the natural wood. Awesome job. These options range from $1 to $6 million. Where is the funding coming from?
That is a very good question. I think at the end of the day, we need to be cognizant of the cost, but we also need to be cognizant of the vision. We didn't know where we were going to come up with $10 million to renovate our wharf. Eight years ago, we set off on that mission, but we did. So my suggestion to this council and the community would be, let's, let's figure out what kind of vision we want and what level of priority we want to spend our public dollars. And then we can develop a plan to come up with those funds. For the wharf previously, we passed a tax. That's certainly an option. For some options, we can look into grant funding as well as our general fund. But at the end of the day, city funds are limited and, you know, we need to balance spending in our parks, on our streets, on our people. It's the job of, job of being city council members, city staff.
Right. I don't, I don't want to give all these options without a clear, with the, without the public being clear on the fact that we may not be able to deliver the $6 million project. I mean, they're not six, yeah, $6 million project. I know Capit, I know Santa Cruz Wharf, they have a private organization, they have a public-private collaboration where someone's paying for the building of the restaurant out there in exchange for a 40-year lease. That's something we can explore if that is the option the public wants?
It's certainly something, if that ended up to being an option that we wanted to explore, it'd be one of the top, the options I would give to the council to get to a new building. I will tell you, the Santa Cruz Wharf is significantly different than ours. It's significantly higher and obviously has a lot more piles. So it's a lot more redundant, robust. So I don't know whether or not we would be as attractive to private sector investment. But if ultimately that was the council's direction to pursue the $6 million project, I think one of the options we should look at would be that partnership and see whether there was an interest in doing that.
With all the natural wood, I wonder about maintenance costs. It's beautiful. I know you talked about weather-resistant materials, but how about the natural wood? How, how much would the maintenance cost be?
It's unknown what the exact maintenance cost, maintenance cost will be, but we can give you some indications on some of the materials that we'd recommend there. The natural woods would be thermally modified woods, which are resistant to decay and, and rot. Though, these will come forward later, but that is the idea is these are, we can't say no maintenance buildings, but that definitely is on our mind. We know how the ocean can beat buildings down, everything, even stainless steel. So that would be part of the design process is to use materials that are going to be best suited for the ocean environment.
And I will add to that, that for this, for the purposes of this exercise of going out to the public, it's really about what uses are on the wharf or what's proposed in terms of each of those concepts. And then once we get to the point that the city council feels comfortable with the direction after getting the public input, we definitely will have to get into those details of, are we utilizing natural or the wood concepts? Or what, what materials will be utilized? So we'll definitely at that stage, go deeper into, into that and the maintenance, so.
With the lifeguard station, is the idea that we'll have someone there regularly?
The idea with the lifeguard station is that we would have a personal rescue watercraft stored in the lifeguard station. And if there were an emergency, the lifeguards could go over to the lifeguard station, access the watercraft and use the motorized vehicle in the, in the water. And also, part of the request for the design was that the, if there were a way to, for the lifeguards to access the roof in order to get a better view if necessary.
So it's like a storage of a jet?
Yeah.
Okay. My last question regarding the kiosks. Are, are they going to be permanent structures there? For the kiosks? And are we leasing the space?
So for now, the kiosks are shown as mobile kiosks, so they could be removed or, yeah, so they can be taken off the wharf. And would they be leased? The idea is that they would be leased, but that, we can figure out as we go through this process as well. We're not really to that point.
I did have one more question. This may be too early to even ask, but grant funding. Has there anything that you're aware of or that would even qualify for this type of adventure?
I think it really depends ultimately on kind of where we end up. I suspect that the more open space types elements, the public access, the restrooms, things like that, probably more so. Restaurant, probably less so.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Great. We will take it out to public comment. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Mick Ruth. You know, since nineteen, or the 1880s, Capitola Wharf has primarily been a fishing wharf. And the numerous outreach attempts that the city has done since the storm of 1982, the public has always indicated they wanted to keep it a fishing wharf, and they wanted to keep it quaint and reflect the character of Capitola. While I appreciate the renderings that Fuse has done, I don't think the council wants to see that style of architecture out there. I, I think if you look at some of the other outreach attempts, the community has indicated they wanted it to resemble a New England fishing village. They wanted the buildings to be quaint, old style. They didn't want modern architecture out there. They didn't want to turn it into a Disneyland-type attraction. So I wish you would consider that when you look at the various options.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Dennis Snorden, longtime Capitola resident, and the wharf is in my heart. Spent a lot of time out there in my life, and so has my kids fishing on that wharf. This, this, this structure, as Mick had brought out, is a, is a fishing wharf. It's been that way, and it's been pretty active as far as the amount of use that you want to see out there. It doesn't need to be an amusement park at all. We provided public bathrooms out there, that's out there. You have, you have the fishing industry. You can do, still do cosmetics and relate it to the ocean. But, but we, we don't need to do a major investment in taking it from here. And I'll give you another reason, and nobody's going to want to hear this. That pier won't be there in 10 years. I'm, I'm dead serious. And you can talk, talk to, talk to what the coastal commission is reading right now about the coast of California. They, they're predicting that within a period of time, maybe 10, 20 years, that there won't be a pier left on the whole state of California on the coastline. The ocean always wins. So if we do something out there, make it so we can move it away or take it away. Leave, leave the pier to be enjoyable place to go walk. We don't have to fill in every space. A nice place to walk out to. And, and many people, it's the only time that they get off the shore in their lifetime is to go out on that pier. Or, or if they're lucky to go out on a boat. But it's also, that pier is designated as a Coast Guard safe refuge, meaning that we have to provide for any boat that wants to tie up there in any emergency, according to Coast Guard standards. And it's, has had that designation for a number of years. I think that may be one place that we can go look for, for, for money, for, for the safety issues such as we're talking about with the jet skis or, or, or other facilities, lighting fixtures are out there. But we don't, we don't need to take this thing to a huge project. The wharf is wonderful like it is. And I, I think, I follow Mick, I think that that's what your community is going to look for. So can I, can I offer an option number seven? Do nothing to the wharf, okay? They should have that, we should have that choice. Keep it like it is. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jacques Bertrand. I've been here as long as Dennis, 27 years or 30, I can't remember. My wife keeps track of this for me. I'm from San Francisco, fourth generation, no, third generation, always, no, fourth generation, I always forget. And I know one wharf in San Francisco, and I don't tell anyone about it, where I could go and fish, which I used to do. We'd go crabbing midnight when the sun, the moon's out. It's really an experience. When I come out to the wharf here, it's almost the same thing. People from around the Bay Area come here to use this wharf to fish. It's really amazing. And often you see kids walking down the street with their reels and everything. And some people with their bikes, instead of a surfboard, they got the fishing equipment. It is a fishing wharf. Thank you.
Thank you. If you know further public comment, I'll take it back to council deliberation.
Keep starting with me. Thank you, Fuse. Thank you, staff, for all that you have done in the renderings and the research. I, I think just a couple of points, I think the restrooms are a mandatory thing to keep. We've been hearing that, that we want that. My personal opinion, I would probably, if we are going to do buildings, keep them aligned in the middle of the wharf. That also, to me, just seems safer for some reason. I don't know why. I just think just to have access for all points of the wharf would be great. And yeah, I, I definitely want to continue our public outreach and make, make these renderings available. If we are doing buildings, it was very modern. Maybe if you have other options that are similar or more beachy quaint, we could kind of splash that in there so that people could have an idea of not just the same type of look. I think that would be important. Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. I'm just wondering if, if it would be possible to incorporate some understanding of the potential longevity of the wharf in this public outreach process. Maybe that's an impossible question, but maybe there is some amount of data from somewhere that we could include. I think it would be important for the public to understand if, you know, they want to invest $6 million to have a general idea, is that, you know, structure going to last for 100 years or 10 years or somewhere in between?
We could probably approach it from the history point of how many storms in the history of the wharf?
That was actually going to be exactly what I was going to say is, you know, I have gone back and looked. I don't remember off the top of my head. I think former council member Ruth may have mentioned it during his public comment, but the wharf has been broken, if you will. I want to say five times since 1880s. And if I remember right, I think actually the 40-year period between 83 and 23 might have been the longest stretch between significant events. So we can include some information like that because it has happened, I think, between every 20 and 40 years out there. And whether that's more frequent in the future, seems entirely likely it will be. So putting that investment in that context is probably helpful.
Yeah, so, you know, I think this was great about our community. And I think we're, you see our community thriving for involvement. And so I think we're going down the right path by reaching out to our community, asking for input, having these working sessions to hear what our community really wants. I think five of us are here elected to vote for the voice of the people or to listen to what the community wants. So I, I appreciate the outreach. I think the six different options, as much as maybe I don't like one or I might like six, you know, I don't really think that's a point for me to make that solid decision. And I think the outreach would be very valuable. I know the CWEF outreach was very much appreciated by the community and really was listened to on some of the enhancements that was done there. And so looking forward to the process and moving forward. And yeah, I think just one thing we look at, you know, the wharf is like looking into a magical crystal ball to see what it looks like in the future. I think it's important to look at the building that was out there that was probably 45 years old. You know, survived for 45 years in probably the most harsh environment ever with zero maintenance. So I think a better built building, or if that was, and if our community comes back and says no building, then I'll be the first one to support that and walk on the wharf that has no building. So I thank you for what you guys are doing, and I think the outreach is going to be great. And I can't look to be a part, I look forward to being a part of it.
I have to say, I agree that, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, but climate change is real, sea level is rising. There are more and more devastating storms and floodings that Capitola will face. In along that lane, I think we do have to be smart with our money. And the option to do nothing should be on the table. Although I love all the modern looks, if I have all the money I, you know, we can spend, I would do that. But these are public funds that we have to be responsible for, and we have to be responsible, spending responsibly. That's all.
Yeah, I think we have to realize that climate change is for real. Our huge wave events that we've had are going to continue. So we have to plan for that as we move forward. I like three through six and add seven to it. But I really think we need to keep fishing hoists for the boats. It's, was resounding how much we heard that after we were repairing our wharf and how important that was to everybody. So I think that's going to be the message going forward. So we'll be able to So we'll be able to put these options out there, and I think we'll come to a good consensus and make some good choices. It's a great project. I was dreaming about it last night. It's good stuff, so look forward to moving forward.
Do we need a motion?
Sure, I'd be looking for a motion, please.
I move the recommended motion. One second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
For, do you want to state it? For clarity, is there support for the buildings to be central on all? I know a few of you said that, and it'd be good to, I think-
I think we're all going to look at all the different options and get more input from the community as we move forward, but I think we all like a lot of the different options.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think there could be potential benefit from having them, you know, either way.
Thank you. For clarity, so that's directing staff to proceed with the six concepts. Okay.
Would it be seven?
Seven.
Doing nothing?
We could certainly include that. That probably, we'll just have to see if that's an additional cost with Fuse. I'm getting a nod. Sounds like they can cover that within their existing contract.
Okay, wait.
Motion.
Was there a second? Sorry. A second. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us up to-
Staff had requested to switch items. Do you see?
Say that. We will take a few-minute break-
Sure thing.
-as we get ready for that. Thank you.
I guess we could take it to public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council deliberation. Start on this side.
I have no comments.
I'll like to make a comment then. I am familiar with one of the gentlemen that put in the application. He's a retired central fire, lives here in Capitola. Worked in all the stations around Capitola. Also, familiar with the other gentleman who's here with us that applied for it. Grateful for that, but I think that Mr. Haraway would probably have a little more insight based on the career that he had with Central Fire. And he's retired and be looking for a motion.
I can move to appoint Scott Haraway to the Measure Q board.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'd like to thank Enrique Domo for putting his name in there, too. That's awesome to see people come out and support us. And it's going to be important for Measure Q because we get money from Measure Q, so. Looking forward to it. That'll bring us to our last item and one of our council members is going to recuse herself. I'll let her go ahead.
Yeah, due to my residence being, I think, about 500 feet from the item, I'm going to recuse myself. Thanks.
This brings us to our last item tonight, annex request for 1610 Bulb Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm going to introduce the annexation request for 1610 Bulb Avenue. Bulb Avenue is located across from Claire's by the Target. And this, the recommendation tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the local agency formation commission in either support of or opposition to the annexation at 1610 Bulb Avenue into the city limits. So a little background on this, back in 2022, we had an application from the same property owner for an assisted living facility. The application was applying for the incentives for community benefits. And under that, you can get additional height and floor area ratio. The original application came in with an 80-room, four-story facility. After getting comments from the planning commission on the item, they updated. The original application, the building was towards the front of the lot. After getting comments from the planning commission, they moved the facility towards the back of the lot with parking at front, increased the rooms to 93, and it was also a four-story facility. As it went through the conceptual review by planning commission and city council, they could not identify defined community benefits with the proposal. And they also had concern with the impacts to the neighboring residents. Next slide, please. So this is showing the location of Bulb Avenue and Capitola Road and the proposed annexation. Next slide. In this slide, this is current condition. So the red line is the Capitola city limits. 1610 Bulb Avenue is adjacent to 3720 Capitola Road. And with the annexation request, Julie, if you could go to the next slide. Bulb Avenue would come into the city limits and the new, the owner of 1610 Bulb is co-owner of 3720. So they would combine the lots and it would be a 262-foot by 160-foot lot. The resulting square footage is close to 10,000 square feet. And in the, they're asking to be community commercial and within community commercial, there's a floor area ratio of one. So it would be just under 10,000 square feet building that they could achieve there. And the height is 40 feet, which is about three stories when you're talking commercial. And next slide, please. So in looking at this application, there's some pros and some cons. I'll go through the list of pros of there'd be zoning consistency and tied to the clean boundary. City would have control over the future development there. And then there's a potential economic benefit by bringing in that lot. The commercial use could be larger and could be potential economic benefit for the city. Cons are this project did not come in with a development application. It's just simply requesting to come into the city boundaries. So we don't know what they would be doing in the future on that site. It would have to comply with the community commercial zoning if we were to move forward with this application for community commercial, but the unknown impacts. And then also neighborhood concerns when this went the conceptual review for the assisted living. Many of the neighbors from Bulb Avenue came out with concerns about increased traffic, safety, the height, the current trees that are on the site. So neighborhood concerns and then also the approval process is is complex. We'd have to, with the annexation, change our general plan as well as our zoning maps, our general plan land use map and our zoning maps. And it just goes through a number of processes between planning commission and city council. And then ultimately a development proposal that would go through planning commission. Next slide, please. So tonight, our recommendation is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the local agency formation commission, either in support or opposition to the annexation. With that, available for questions. And I also wanted to let you know that Drew Lander is here, who is representing the owner applicant. And he's available for questions as well.
Great. We'll come back to council comments. I'm sorry, council questions.
What was our outreach we've done to the community about this annexation potential?
So there's actually no requirement for public outreach, but we did put a posting on the site a couple of weeks in advance. And then we also, we ended up mailing mailers the postcards last week. So just there, once, once I got my first call on it, I said, let's notice everyone on Bulb Avenue within 500 feet. So those went out as well.
And so that the same notification zone that we did last time when the, when there was a proposed project. So the same people that were noticed about the project last time and the same people that are being noticed about the potential annexation?
It's not exactly the same because there really is no noticing requirement with this. So it's a little bit different in that last time, this time I just focused on Bulb Avenue and letting those neighbors know. Typically, you do a 500-foot radius from the property.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say that you did 500. You said you just did Bulb Avenue before and before we did 500 feet. This was just Bulb Avenue at this time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions on this end?
Can you elaborate on what community commercial means, like the building type?
Sure. Community commercial is a zone. So yeah, so north of Capitola Road is regional commercial and that's our mall site and leading all the way to the dealerships, the car dealerships. South of Capitola Road is community commercial. So it would have the same zoning as King's Plaza and Begonia Plaza as you head south down 41st Avenue. That's all of that development along 41st Avenue, south of Capitola Road, headed towards the point is community commercial.
Okay.
Until you get to the train tracks, clarifying.
Yeah, so my question is, does the property need to be annexed in order for the developer to combine both sites into a single project? Or what would the likely outcome be if the city of Capitola does not pursue annexation of the site?
So the question is, would they, would they do a project that's combined without being annexed? They could do some type of project if it were tied to like, they'd still have to have the commercial use on the Capitola site. But if they wanted to have, say, employee housing on the residential site for a couple of units, they could do that and be tied together. But it would be a different project. They're different zones.
On the county side, it's just like residential. It's not.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so if they wanted to tie it together, they'd have to keep that residential use.
That's my only question.
Great. We'll take it off to public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Clark and members of the council. Appreciate. My name is Drew Lander and I am representing the property owner at 1610. And I definitely would like to answer a couple of those questions I heard there. I do appreciate Katie's staff report. I think it was very thorough. I do want to point out, though, how this came about. I was not involved, of course, in the previous application. The previous, the property at 3720 Capitola was previously owned by another individual, by an LLC that was really pushing that previous development. That individual has left when that project didn't really go through. My, my client did, you know, did purchase some of that property or cones it with another gentleman. And that, I think that's important to note that they, they've kind of, that project, a lot of money was spent in putting those plans together and it didn't really go anywhere. So with, you know, being respectful of the neighborhood, they said, okay, that's not going to work. We're going to, you know, do something different. Really, the interest here, so I'd like to say, I definitely in the staff report, I agree with all of the pros of the annexation, but I want to address the cons. First, I would like to note that the, you know, I'd ask the council not to penalize my client for, you know, the future or past applications. That application, however it went, didn't, did not move forward. So they want to do something different, but they want to do it with the city, together with the city instead of, instead of having a kind of divided or separate parcel. So individually, the parcels can do certain things together. There's, I think there's more of a partnership or a proposal. But I do want to emphasize that they have not spent any money on putting a new proposal together until they get some direction from the city. And they won't do that unless they're confident that the city is interested in, in some type of development there, which is the reason for the annexation. And so, you know, to address that first, in reality, any future use of Bulb Avenue really is exemplified by or magnified by utilizing it together with the city. Otherwise, it just becomes a residential development there. I do want to note that all services currently really are provided by the city. It's adjacent to the city. It's within the city's sphere of influence. So it's always been the city's intent to annex this parcel. So it's not something new. That's how the annexation is, does kind of move smoother that way. It just needs the council's approval. And I want to point out in number two, neighborhood concerns. Any future development there is going to be, any, any proposal does have to go through the same process, goes through the SEQA process, goes through the approval process. It's not like it gets annexed and then boom, they can, oh, I apologize, I'm out of time. Can I just maybe 20 more seconds real quick?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, so the neighborhood concerns will be addressed. It's not circumventing the neighborhood. And then on number three, I do want to disagree that, that I don't think it's a complex process. I think annexation is very straightforward. There are many steps. But I want to point out, as Ms. Hurley did correctly identify, all costs will be, will be borne by, by the applicant. So to do all those map changes, everything, they will pay for it. So it's not, it's not a burden to the city in that way. And I have a couple of their notes, but if, if, you know, I want to answer your questions. I don't want to go on about, about that. But if you have any questions directly for me or, or other concerns, I certainly would like to answer those.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Vic Klausser. I live on Bulb. I bought my house there in 1985. And so I've been there a long time and raised my kids there. And there's a lot of other new families that are raising their kids there. Couple of things. I won't be short. Thank you, first of all, for not shutting it down at eight o'clock and being able to let us speak. And so I'll try to make this quick so my neighbors can talk. I'm just worried that the annexation will provide, once it's annexed, what voice does Bulb Avenue residents and the unincorporated part of the county have? Does that mean that just Capitola is going to go by whatever rules you have? But if that includes a four-story building, it, we don't feel like it belongs there because mainly the traffic. You're not going to be able to access it except for maybe Claire's Street coming in or going towards 41st Avenue on Capitola Road. So that means everything else is going to be circumvented from Bromer up Bulb Avenue. And it's a very narrow street. As many of us have said, we don't even have sidewalks on a lot of it. And we're going to be interrupted by ambulances and fire trucks. And look, my parents, my dad's 98, my mom's 97. They were in Aegis for a couple of years. They're still with us, thank God. But having visited them there, I know how much family traffic comes to visit. And they're only a two-story project. They might have more rooms. I don't know. But four stories, it's going to create quite a traffic problem on Bulb Avenue. And we'd rather not see that facility go there. Something smaller residential is what we'd like. So that's all I'll say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Donna Jensen Lewis. I also live on Bulb Avenue, right in the middle. I would encourage all of you to go take a look at it sometime if you're not familiar with the street. It is incredibly narrow. There's not, there's a lot of cars that park out on the street. We do not have sidewalks. The infrastructure is, is quite poor. It's not anything that can sustain a larger development. We really are a residential area. It's all families, single-family homes. There's not apartments or townhomes or anything like that. And we want to keep it that way. We want to keep it a nice residential area. We have our mall and all of that. There's plenty of development around at the end of our street, but our street is residences and we would like to keep it that way. Many of the neighbors that I've been in contact with support this too. And we would ask you to write the letter opposing this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, how's it going? I'm Brian Lewis, Donna's husband. And yeah, I just feel the same way Donna does that this is, if you go to this area, you'll see that you, there's only certain ways you can access this property. It's a weird kind of three-way intersection that it's kind of, I don't know, like dog-legged into Bulb Avenue. And you don't really have access any other way but down Bulb Avenue or just right across. It's, it's just a very awkward place to put something this. I just feel like this annexing is just like a foregone conclusion, like once this passes, that giant facility is moving in. You may have other ideas of what you want to put there. But you mentioned that if it's annexed, it'll be a lot like it is down 41st Avenue or the Kings Village or not the, you know, where the shopping center where the theater is. But the infrastructure can support those types of things on 41st Avenue, but it just can't in the area that proposal is. So we, you know, like my wife said, we just want to keep it simple. If you go there, you'll know exactly what we're talking about. It just, it's just too small of an area to support something that big. So we just want to keep it the way it is. So, thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, good evening, council. Thanks for having us. I'm another member of the Bulb Avenue community. My name is Caroline Caspa. I grew up in Santa Cruz and was blessed to be able to purchase a home just a couple of years ago on Bulb. And something that I really love about it is the tight-knit neighborhood. And, you know, there's kids playing in the street, playing basketball. It's like, it's the character of that street that I really fell in love with. I just have so many questions about this process. And I'm wondering if maybe there's space for us to talk to somebody about it at some point. The transparency is something that I'm really concerned about. You know, you were, you said that there wasn't any requirement for letting us know what was going on this meeting, but maybe there was before because there was a proposed plan. But I wonder like if it did get annexed, would there be any consulting with the neighbors? Like this gentleman said that our concerns will be addressed, but like, will they? Like, I just don't trust that. Once it's annexed, I want to know more about, yeah, like what say we would have. Undoubtedly, the nature of like, the community would change. But at that point, like maybe it wouldn't be four stories, but it's still completely out of our control and it doesn't feel good. And yeah, I'm curious if tonight, the question is to authorize the mayor to write a letter or if they're going to be writing a letter no matter what and either in support or opposition. And what does writing a letter like this aim to do? Like, what's the impact of a letter like this? It's just a very confusing process and it doesn't feel like we're being considered. And like the benefit to the community doesn't feel like it's there. So yeah, thank you for considering that. And I know that, you know, we're going to do everything we can to have our voice heard and have a seat at the table about this, no matter what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm not good off the cuff, so I'm going to read my prepared remarks. My name is Jennifer Galker and I also am a homeowner on Bulb Avenue in the Live Oak community. And I'm here to strongly oppose the annexation of 1610 Bulb Avenue into the city of Capitola. This annexation, to me, is premature and fundamentally unfair to the residents who will be most impacted, which are the Live Oak homeowners like myself, who would have no vote in Capitola, but would bear all the consequences of this decision. Capitola is being asked to annex a residential lot into its community commercial zone without a development proposal, meaning the public has no way of assessing the real impacts. Why should a zoning change be approved when we don't even know what's coming? That seems fundamentally unfair. And the only thing we do know is that the change will allow for commercial development where residential homes currently exist. So to me, the previous proposal for this site failed to meet the criteria, or not just me, when it came before you and the planning commission. It failed to meet the criteria for a community benefit. And approving annexation now with no development proposal only ensures that the next project will be decided behind closed doors without community input. Capitola will collect property and sales tax revenue from any future community development while Live Oak absorbs the noise, congestion, and parking overflow. And we're in a housing crisis, as we all well know. So this lot currently has residential zoning and could be developed for much-needed housing. Instead, if approved for annexation, Capitola is choosing to prioritize future commercial development over expanding housing opportunities in our much-needed Live Oak community. As my neighbors have stated, this is a street filled with teachers, small business owners, and others who are just trying to make a living in our community. If Capitola moves forward with this annexation, it will be setting a dangerous precedent, approving land use changes without transparency and cutting out the very residents who will be most effective, affected. This is not responsible planning. I urge the council and the mayor to reject supporting this annexation and protect the integrity of our residential neighborhood. If a developer wants to build here, they should be required to follow the existing zoning laws, just like everyone else. Capitola should not make exceptions that benefit private developers at the expense of our community. And to speak to what Caroline mentioned, the lack of notification is alarming. If there was a proposal, then a lot more people would be here. And the fact that they're trying to get approval without it is, like I said, upsetting and alarming. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hold our pluses, I know it's getting late and everybody's got some concerns, but keep the pluses up, please. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jason Wagner. I'm a resident. I own a property on Bulb Avenue. And my main concern is losing our voice and what goes on if the property is annexed and Capitola gets to make all decisions and we are the ones that are going to feel the impact. So that's my main concern is just losing the voice, not having a say in what goes on. So. Yeah, and I have a family. I've got young kids. My three sons have learned how to ride bike. We're always going up and down the street and like people have said, there's no sidewalks or anything. And I'm concerned if there's some sort of development, more traffic and, you know, what kind of safety concerns that's going to have. And I'd like to have a say in it, you know, because it's going to impact me. So I'm against that annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Clark, council members and staff. My name is Tom Ginsburg and I've been living on the Bulb Avenue neighborhood for 36 years. Change happens. We all understand. Properties get developed. You know, we see all the proposals that are happening in Santa Cruz that seem wild and crazy. I don't have an illusion that, that the developer has a right to look at what their options are for the property at 3720 Capitola Road. However, considering that the Bulb neighbors here are in the sphere of influence of Capitola, and let's face it, we are buying our goods in Capitola stores. We are, we, while we pay taxes in Santa Cruz, we also pay taxes in Capitola. So we are in effect influenced by the decisions that happen in Capitola. As I echo my neighbors, many who couldn't be here, but in the packet, you'll find a letter from me along with 20 of other neighbors who all responded to a Google poll in form in opposition, all in opposition to this annexation because of the effects that it will have in our neighborhood. We've already heard about the traffic circulation, the access. Unless Capitola is looking to build in a new left-turn lane to go into that property on westbound Capitola Road, there's still going to be a lot of traffic coming down here. And again, I know, we have no proposal for what is actually going to happen there. 93 units previously, four stories. It was pretty out of character with the neighborhood. And I don't doubt that another proposal similar to that will come into play. Again, like my neighbor said, I fear losing our ability to voice our opinions on what's going to happen at the properties there if 1610 gets annexed. So along with my neighbors who all couldn't be here, I urge you, the council, to please oppose this proposal unless there's a reasonable development proposal brought along with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, council. My name is Kimberly Frye and I live about four houses away since 97 from the proposed annexation. I'm not for it. There's going to be, of course, more traffic. There's going to be a lot more noise pollution. There's going to be some more light pollution. We'll have ambulance going there. Are they going to need to get garbage done twice a week or more? And of course, the traffic is the biggest thing. What's the point of developing this for like 80 or 90 units for seniors for care? Because they get a lot of money for that every single month. So it's, it's all, it's all about, we want more money for the people who now own that and want to develop it. And that's just wrong. It's a neighborhood. We want our voices to be heard. We don't want our, our quality of life to be brought down from this, and it definitely will. There is also seven redwood heritage trees on those two properties, two on the one that they want to annex and five more on the other one. And I'm sure those trees won't get a say in anything. In addition, there's a cell phone tower that's not really very high across the street from there. That's not good for the brains of the elderly that have Alzheimer's and dementia. It's just not. Electromagnetic field is just not good for brains that close. And all the research says that. So I hope that you oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Don Wolwsgard and I lived on Bulb Avenue for over 20 years now. We seemed to have a rather unified community on the street when this last proposal was attempted to go through. And this time, you know, we, we did, I had to call on this last week, last Thursday. And because I just, I just happened to stop and look at this green sign that was on a cyclone fence. I had to get off and read it because it's so small of thoughts. cyclone fence, and had to get off and read it because it's so small of thoughts. And then, so we were mailed out one of those green cards on Friday, less than a week ago. So I think that was not too fair for all of the neighbors maybe being able to be here tonight. There's a lot of talk about the formerly proposed project, but really, the issue is this annexation. And the annexation is, was no doubt a backdoor approach of getting that out of the way before they go through with the project. So I don't agree with the annexation. You know, there's, something else is, you know, naturally, it seems, you know, not being in politics, it seems like Capitola, if somebody wants to add their property to Capitola that borders it, you know, they would be interested in that because it's more tax dollars. But then again, the county of Santa Cruz, which is, it's located right now, they're, they're losing those tax dollars. And I don't see where anybody from the county is able to say anything about this. I mean, actually, our black fence borders Capitola, but that doesn't mean everybody's going to be interested in, in moving there or annexing their property. And the last item was the two trees in front of that house at 1610. They, for the last year, every few months, they go out and they cut branches off, and more and more branches. It used to be that the branches would actually almost reach the ground. And now it's cleared out. They're higher than the telephone poles that are across the street. So there's a planned elimination of those, of those redwood trees. That's kind of the way I look at it. So that should be recognized here. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, no, not at this time. Bring it back to council deliberation.
I think I have some follow-up questions. I think it was stated, well, my question was, what would the cost be to us to rezone and all that? But it sounds like the developer would incur those costs. Okay. And I guess, as part of the public comment, one of my questions also was, if it was annexed and a proposed development comes to the city, what is our public outreach then? What is our responsibility then?
So to update, at that point, even before a project comes forward for the zoning and the general plan land use map, there would be noticing for that that is required. With public notice placed on the property, I think it's 10 days in advance, as well as sending out the green cards to anyone within a certain distance and placing a notice in the newspaper. But then, once a development application comes in, it would, if it's a conditional use permit, it would go through the same process of the same noticing. So, and the noticing goes not only to Capitola residents, but also to county residents.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now.
I have a couple of questions, too. Let's see. I'm wondering if it would be possible, if there, you know, assuming there is a future, a future development, to add a turn lane and make some modifications to that aisle on Capitola Road. So I definitely feel for the residents of Bulb Avenue not wanting, you know, high traffic in their small residential street. That makes a lot of sense. And I'm wondering, you know, what, what realistically Capitola could do to accommodate commercial development while, you know, protecting the residents of Bulb?
When an application comes in, we would work with our public works director, who's also an engineer, and look at what the options are there. Because there's definitely standards for streets and distances from corners. I can't say that with the previous development application, when they moved the building from the front of the lot to the back, they were going to access the property off of Capitola Road. I'm not sure about changing that center aisle. So that, but it could be looked at, and it just has to comply with standards for streets.
Sure.
Safety.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, and then my next question is, if you could give some insight into the annexation process? And will the residents of Bulb and nearby neighborhoods have some sort of a opportunity to, you know, agree or not to that?
So this first step is when the LAFCO reaches out and asks anyone that's going to provide services to the site to get a will-serve letter. So for the water, they've gone to Santa Cruz Water. For sewer, they've gone to the county sanitation. And that's the letter that we're talking about tonight of whether or not Capitola will serve this site. So this letter is impactful. LAFCO would not move forward with the application in, if they do not get a letter of support from the city of Capitola at this time. And I believe that we may have a LAFCO representative on the Zoom call. I'm not sure. So if there are more, if you would like more specificity about that project, we...
Yeah.
Would you like that?
I think that would be great, to hear, hear a little bit more. I'm curious also if the county of Santa Cruz would need to provide a letter of approval as well.
So there was, as part of, first off, the city of Capitola hasn't annexed anything in 20 years, so none of us have any direct experience with it. But there is what's called a revenue neutrality agreement, so we would have to work out with the county, like, how the tax dollars would be split. I do believe they've established a standard policy for small annexations like this. But yes, the county of Santa Cruz would have a say in this as well, and it would be part of the conversation. The LAFCO meetings, or the LAFCO process, they're going to just checking with all the service providers, can you provide services to this parcel? And then they would have their own public hearings, basically, on it, their public Brown Act notice meetings, make a decision about the annexation. They would want to see an agreement between the city and the county about revenue neutrality. So there'd be a lot, there'd be a fair number of steps.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious about, like, to what extent the local residents' voices will be weighed in upon that ultimate decision by LAFCO, is that right?
Yeah, the, the, LAFCO's a Brown Act committee meeting, a Brown Act committee, so they are, their meetings, excuse me, apologies, I don't know if I've ever done that before. Their meetings are open, open to the public as well, just like our council meetings. In fact, sometimes I think they host them here.
Okay. And then, yeah, I just, I felt like there was a couple comments that seemed to suggest that the project, that there was a project being proposed that was the same or related to the previous project that was proposed for that site. And I just want to make clear that, that there is no proposed project at this time. And I think that's an important distinction to make, so we're not currently talking about approving a home care facility or any facility for the elderly. And then my last question was, does, does the community commercial zoning that we have there currently allow for mixed use, adding some level of residential, right?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Were you going to go to the question at LAF, the LAFCO rep, or did you get your answer? Yeah, so one thing I appreciate in Capitola and also the surrounding areas is the sense of that we do listen to our community and we do go out for outreach. I did attend, I wasn't on council, but I did attend the meetings and heard the concerns of the community about the proposed project before, which I thought were very important. And then the project was tabled, more or less. Looking at this project now, not knowing what it's like, I would encourage that the project be developed to some sort of degree so we knew what that looked like incoming and what the impact could be to the community. I think that's important. I heard some comments, you know, about, you know, you're in Live Oak, you spend money. You know, I don't, I don't think anybody on council here, especially our city staff, doesn't look at where exactly a dividing line goes. We look at it every, locally as a community together. So I have concerns about moving forward with an annexation like that, with a will-serve letter, without knowing what the full impact and what this could be, and what this could look like to the community. And so those are my comments at this time that I have.
Yeah, I'm also in agreement without the unknown of a project. What are we setting ourselves up for? If we had a project annexation, it sounds like a great idea, but at this point, I don't think it's something we should be doing until we get a better idea of scope of the project and a lot of other factors.
I'm just curious what the potential cost to the developer would be to come up with a project proposal without any guarantees, that it would be, you know, come to fruition because it's, the lots are split amongst city-county lines. So like, what are we, if we're not going to annex, what are we realistically asking the developer to do in terms of a dollar amount putting on the table, which I believe is the economic risk for them, right?
Yeah, so the city, the city has a conceptual review process, and hopefully that's a direction community development director might, might think would be appropriate. Conceptual review process lets sort of projects before they're fully developed come to the council. So you don't need to necessarily come in with a full set of complete plans with landscape or all these details. But, so that could be a lower-cost way, if there was a conceptual review process to initially review it. But Katie, if you had anything to add?
Yeah, so the conceptual review process is just that. Like, you can keep it very conceptual. You don't have to go to a certain extent. This applicant did go through the conceptual review process last time, but they hired one of the premier architects that works on assisted living. So I think they put a lot of money, actually, into that original development, and then they made a change between planning commission and city council. So it can get very expensive, but it does, the conceptual review process is set up to not incur a lot of cost and to get feedback. So if we had ideas of the land use, like, if they're going to make it a retail shop, or if it's going to be a daycare, or if it's a mixed, it could really be conceptual and keep the, the cost down.
That, that is a completely separate owner and developer, right?
So they were, there were partners, and one partner has sold off his interest in that front lot.
Okay. Got it. Got it. Well, I will say that I do believe this could be a good economic opportunity for Capitola, and that I hope that we can find a common ground between the developers and between the residents of Bulb, who I think it is very important, though they're not residents of Capitola, should have an, you know, equal voice, being our nearby neighbors, and to, you know, respect their concerns, which I think are valid. But I, I certainly hope that we can find a way to come together and find a mutually beneficial outcome to this in the future. So I look forward to working with both parties and minimizing any negative impact while developing the site.
Yeah, I think, I think with more of a vision moving forward is kind of what it sounds like we're all looking for in order to feel secure in our decision with the annexation. So I'll make the recommenda, recommendation to oppose the annexation of 1610 Bulb Avenue into Capitola city limits.
I'll second that.
I have one question about that. Does that signify an intent of finality that we will permanently oppose that? Or it's, it's just open to, if it comes back with some sort of project proposal in the future? It would be simple to change that?
Simply responding to this application that LAFCO received. So this would be a response to LAFCO. This is not a, we're not establishing future policy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye. So that brings us to the end of our meeting tonight. And in German, thank you everybody for coming. Be safe and take care of one another.